This partnership will not only, you know, probably enhance our patient, but it'll give us a little bit more access to care with some of the facilities that we will be able to build with them. I'm really excited about it. I urge you guys to approve that and thank you for your time.
Hello, thanks for your time. My name is Steve Thompson. I'm a resident of fourteen ninety-nine Boardwalk Place in Foxland Harbor. I'm relatively new to the area. I have been moved here a few years ago in retirement, seeking a quiet place in a safe neighborhood with a good community. And that's what I found in Gallatin Foxland Harbor. Unfortunately, the proposal that's before us now does not allow for that. I was here last month. I saw the original proposal, which it appears to have been a ploy to blow it up so substantially and so ridiculously that they could later say public comments brought them back down to earth and they're working to work with the community. They're not. It's still an extremely large commercial development at the very entrance star subdivision as well as Douglas Bend and the intersection of thirty-one and Douglas Bend, which is already a very congested area. So I urge you to take a look at that. As I understand, there hasn't been any studies about the amount of dredging that would be required in that cove. I live on that cove. It's a relatively narrow cove, but an extremely narrow channel. So undoubtedly, once they start construction, they're going to find that an old stick relate, they're going to have to do a lot of dredging to allow for the boat traffic. The boat traffic itself will increase the danger tremendously. I chose it for retirement just a few years ago, and I'm scared that that's in jeopardy now. And I urge you to say no to what's in front of us right now unless, as the previous gentleman said, they return to the original concept of a small neighborhood marina to facilitate the community in that area. Thank you for your time.
I just want to clarify because I'm not used to proceedings. The individual items you mentioned, we will have opportunities to speak then if we don't now.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
The majority of the items on the agenda have individual public comments. So when we get to the marina topic, we'll have a public comment just on the marina itself. So same with the way to account out of the other ones that I mentioned. So that's why it's better to just be the only topic we're talking about that marina. So just for clarity, if anyone else has comments on the purity releases, the patent canisoff arms or the coal spillier attached garage, this will be your chance to speak. Otherwise, we'll move on to the agenda and we'll do the public comments on each individual item as we go. So now we'll close that part of the public comment and we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion for sale second by Albert to approve the consent agenda. Any questions? All those in favor of approval say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed, say no. Consent agenda is passed. Now take this item three, which is resolution two zero two five dash zero six three, five oh three Cole Sperry Road, attached branch.
Good evening, Commissioners. Charlie Pierri, staff planner. The owner and applicant requests approval of the site plan for a five hundred and seventy-six square foot accessory structure with alternative architecture on a one point five nine acre lot in Langley Estates, lot number five. This property is zone R fifteen PRD, medium density residential, planned residential development, and located five oh three Cole Sperry Road. Staff does not have any comments on this item. Every thing that we require on site plan seems to be in order. Staff recommends denial of resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six three. However, if this body so chooses to approve this resolution, we have one condition.
Do you have a representative for the applicant or the applicant present this evening? Doesn't appear the applicants here. Do you see him, Charlie?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's fine. This is a pretty routine approval for attached accessories structure. So I'll vote for approval. Motion to approve the one, isn't it? Second, Mr. Carrier. All those in favor of approval say aye. Aye. Any opposed, like sign. Okay, it's approved. Thank you. All right, so that brings us to item four, which is resolution two zero two five dash zero six nine, Foxland Harbor Marina.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
In a way that possible, we'll let the staff make their presentation and then we'll hold the public comment before the applicant speaks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Carpenter, staff planner. The owner and applicant request approval of the amended preliminary master development plan for the Foxland Harbor Marina on seven point three eight acres, zoned MRO, multiple residential and office, and MU mixed-use zone districts located south of Nashville Pike and east of Douglas Bend Road. The owner and applicant request approval of re-submitted plans for Foxland Harbor Marina. Removing the dry storage and the hotel use and replacing that with four condo buildings and two mixed-use buildings containing a hundred and twelve condo units and the potential for five thousand square feet of restaurant and thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy square feet of commercial retail use on the property. No tenants have been shown to us at this time. The applicant requests approval of a height exception for all buildings. Submitted plans indicated building heights of sixty feet for condo buildings and seventy-five for the mixed-use buildings. However, the applicant did contact staff late last week to revise some of those numbers. Historical approvals within Foxland Harbor, including phases two point one and two point three, have included maximum building heights of eighty-seven feet. Previous versions of the reverie at Foxland Harbor, this was phase two point one, showed sixty-four condo units in four buildings plus an office. And then previous versions of the marina plan had the two hundred and fifty three unit, or boat slips in the water with the small retail restaurant use on land. As a reminder, staff would like to point out that what is in the water is controlled by the Arnie Corps in their permitting process. The city of Gallatin only has purview really to review what is on land. So the proposed a hundred and twelve condo units with this amendment would bring the total approved unit count for all of phase two to a hundred and seventy units. This is lower than the original approved count of two hundred and eighty-four from two thousand and eight. The traffic study for this will be fully reviewed with the FMDP for this development. So with this, this proposal represents a change in the mix of uses, an increase in residential units from the approved sixty-four units in phase two point one, and change in access for the site. However, the proposed architecture does match with the condo buildings that are currently there. However, staff recommends that this be considered a major amendment to the approved Foxland PMDP and recommends approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero six nine with eleven conditions, and there will be a public comment on this item.
This time I'll open the public comment on the resolution two zero two five dash zero six nine, Fox Harbor Marina. Please come speak. A few comments to five minutes and, you know, respectfully be respectful and we'll be here.
Thank you. Barry Gray. I live in Foxland Harbor. I have a question for the planners, and I may be wrong, but I recall between five and eight years ago that there was a proposal from the developers to do some kind of lodging in Fairview Plantation. And my memory was it was going to be somewhere along the Eighteenth Green or Eighteenth Fairway. And there was an uprising in Fairview to oppose lodging, hotel, whatever label you want to be on it. I've tried to find the press releases on that. I could not do that. Maybe some of you remember that. But if that's true, why would we in Foxland not get the same protection? Because it did not get approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, I'm Tim Weeks. I live at sixty-one oh one Hager Grove Pass, just on the Mount Juliet Hermities line. I'm here to speak for the Sierra Club, Middle Tennessee Club, Middle Tennessee Group, I should say, but thank you for the opportunity to address you. Sierra Club of Middle Tennessee is a large part of the statewide chapter, and while we are guided by a national organization, our positions are grounded in Tennessee values. Those values are shared with Tennessee farmers, hunters, fishermen, and women in any Tennessean who enjoys the outdoors and our quality of life. From our point of view, this marina proposal is contrary to these values. We enjoy the lake and river for recreational purposes, but at what point is there too much access? We've heard stories from area residents who are witnessing shoreline erosion and declining water quality due to sediment disturbances from various types of boats. These problems will only multiply due to the size of this marina and its plans to accommodate very large boats, let alone the dredging during the construction process. The density of this development is also concerning. The area is largely already residential, where hundreds have invested their lives and their money in their piece of the American dream. Marina is a game changer for these residents. It's a very small area, and the marina will also include condominiums, restaurants, shops, and Las Vegas-style neon lighting. It is a major commercial proposal contrary to the residential and casual recreational use of this area. I might add, this proposal was more many times, like sleight of hand. This is our proposal? No, this is the proposal. Developments like these seem like progress and opportunity, but at what cost? Do we so easily give away our natural resources to commercialism and dollar signs? Consider preservation over exploitation. The majority of the neighbors have spoken over and over against this marina. Put yourself in their shoes. Would you want to live next door to this? Also, what will be the quality of the lake you pass on to the next generation after it is churned for years by boats the size of battleships? We hope you'll decline this proposal, and thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
City Council, planning commissioners, and city staff. My name is David Shear. I live at ten twenty-nine Albatross Way in Gallatin. The city of Gallatin has this launch facility that it will be losing, and I don't understand how this is going to be the best interest of the city. I have my own boat. I keep it in the garage. I use this launch facility. It's overtaxed now. But it seems to be on the way to being ruined. The city of Hendersonville just opened an approved facility with assistance of Bill Dance. How can you be taking your citizens to travel to Hendersonville and to the county facilities with the loss of this public launch facility? Just go by any weekend and look at the current demand. When this is lost, you will be seeing the wrath of many citizens who will be outraged. As you know, most people don't pay attention to planning commissions and board memoriam. They just use the ramp. But when you close that ramp, and you will effectively close it, you will see the wrath of many citizens. This proposed facility is the most ported designed facility of its kind. It appears no one with practical knowledge of such a marina facility was involved in the design process. There's several issues with this design. Where are the restroom facilities for these big dock facilities? There's none mentioned. There's no public restroom area shown on the plans. Of course, the plans aren't very good, and we really can't read the plans, but there's no restroom facilities there. And you're talking about two hundred-plus boat slips. You're talking about as many as five hundred to a thousand people being out there. It's just ridiculous. Where is the planned security proposed for the docks? They're going to put fifty docks next to the little launch ramp that we have there now in use. Those fifty docks are going to be exposed to public traffic coming in and out of that parking lot. You know they're going to put security out there. They'll wind up with a big chain link fence or the big gated opening fence there. But no, that's not shown on any plans, but you know that will happen, and they'll be coming to you for that request. How in the world is this small ramp with limited parking be able to handle the crowds with this single ramp for over two hundred docks? You know, they had a launch ramp at the other location where the condos are. They took that out. This is going to be the only launch ramp for all of the docks. So people that are up there launching their boats, taking them in once or twice a year because of winter weather and so on, and their ski doos and all that, and they'll be going in and out of there, and they'll have to come back around the other way to the other parking lot. I don't understand it. It's just terrible. When is a good idea to add existing docks to this boat ramp? And increase the number from last time was thirty-eight docks on the existing ramp. Now they're throwing fifty docks at the existing ramp, and there's no restrooms down there at that location. Is it going to be a sanitary fish cleaning facility? Are all these people out there fishing and so on going to come in, clean the fish, and dump the goods right there in the water like they do now? I don't understand. How on earth can this facility be used without added boat ramp near the commercial area? They should be required to have their own ramp for that main dock area. Let's talk about the circus events of the past since widely attached launch party at the clubhouse at Foxland Harbor in April of two thousand and twenty-four. These are the countless sets of plans that we've had to deal with. You must deny this application and clarify many issues before the city council considers this. You owe that to the public. You must demand facilities meet height requirements and building facade requirements in keeping with the brick and stone facing as required. You must demand to see a traffic study before the access to Douglas Bend Road and Foxland Harbor are approved and allow the public to weigh in on that traffic study. I'm used to be a city engineer for the city of Little Rock, Arkansas. I was also a public works director for many years. That's where I retired from. This is going to be a circus out there. You must require, as an addition of approval, that the entry to Foxland Harbor, its stacked stone walls, stone entry, and mature trees that match the south side of the drive be maintained. The mayor recommended this in her last meeting here that I was at. She wanted to see some, she asked the developer to show some elevations of the change, what that's going to look like when you come in our neighborhood. We have this beautiful matched sides to our neighborhood as you drive in. I gave a copy to Matt Harris, a copy to Maureen over here. A poor rendering that I tried to do to show you how that's going to look. You're going to have this lopsided entry facility. You're going to have a nice, what you have on the right side, and the left side. They're going to demo all that. It's going to go down to the ground, and you're going to have a four-foot stone wall, and you're going to have a parking lot and a bunch of commercial buildings. It's going to look awful. You must have applicant move the dumpster station. They had the gall to put the dumpster station for this whole facility and all those docks right there next to our main drive as you come in with all the trash and the fleas and the flies and all that stuff. They should have that all over buried in the development center. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Shandra Waller, and I live at one oh two nine Albatross Way in Gallatin. Currently, the Foxland Harbor Marina project is under consideration by your planning commission. It should require a major amendment to come to the council for consideration. Additionally, new environmental analysis should be required as the project has changed drastically from the originally proposed project. The newly proposed project is just another example of bait and switch. The project is constantly changing with nearly nonexistence public notice. The most recent changes were only publicly noticed two business days ago. In fact, the developer's Foxland Harbor Marina website does not even reflect the wrong changes. It shows an old project and an old map. A small group of property owners will benefit from this materially to the detriment of the general public. The developers bragging to the press how they've listened to the community and redesigned the project to address the public's many concerns. So untrue. In fact, the Hundred and Ton Room Hotel is now merely camouflaged with the more politically correct designation as condos. Unless these condos are prohibited to be used for short-term rentals, their use will basically be the same as hotel rooms. The pictures that were included that show neon lights and crowded outdoor spaces better reflect Nashville's Lower Broadway than what a Gallatin Marina should look like. The developer cares not the project's impact on the community, only how much profit can be achieved. One has only to visit the site to see the developer's lack of interest in maintaining an attractive property. Currently, weeds eight-foot in height and greater with trash hidden within exist. I've notified Gallatin codes person of this issue three times with no visible response to the violation. As I previously noted to the planning commission, this project has serious issues that I and many others have invented and identified. Specifically, requests for height waivers. I'm a little confused on actually what's being requested because your planner said that they've changed those numbers again very recently. So I'm speaking from what I could tell that they were asking for seventy-five for commercial and sixty for condos. This is forty feet higher than your own city standard and totally out of character for a residential community. Where are the elevations of the project from the Foxland Boulevard that the requested by you last time? Likely, they're not provided because they would be an OMG awakening of the impact to the community. There's no clear description of what the fourteen thousand square feet of commercial will be used for. Access from Foxland Boulevard. A major commercial development such as that proposed should not be permitted to access an entirely residential street such as Foxland Boulevard. All access, if the project is approved, should be from Douglas Bend. If emergency access is needed from Foxland, it should be gated and only used by emergency responders. With over two hundred and fifty slips, where are all these trailers going to be parked? If they're allowed to park in the parking lot like they do at other marinas, it will certainly be a big eyesore. The project should be conditioned if you're going to approve anything at all other than a very small marina. You should eliminate the slips that are accessed by the existing public launch ramp. All permanent access must be via Douglas Bend Road, no access from Foxland. All construction access should be from Douglas Bend, and in the event there is any damage to Foxland Boulevard, it must be repaired. There should be no gaudy and neon signage and lighting anywhere on the site. It must meet your requirements of seventy percent brick and stone on building exteriors. The current, excuse me, the current entry to Foxland should not be impacted. All the beautiful landscaping that exists, the trees, the shrubs, the stone wall, that are currently in mulched areas should remain as is and not destroyed during construction of this awful project. You should require that they fully buffer the parking and the buildings from Foxland subdivision using large four-inch or greater coniferous trees. You should increase the landscaping requirement in the parking lots to use large, again, four-inch greater shade-type trees. Separate parking lots for freestanding condos and the commercial buildings should be separate. You should demand, I'm at the end, there should be no overnight trailer parking. The parking spaces need to meet code requirements, not a bunch of golf cart parking spaces, no dumpsters adjacent to Foxland or Doug, and no short-term condo rentals. Goodall has said he would do things to mitigate these issues, but nothing in writing. Based upon his previous commitments, which he has failed to honor, it is imperative that all requirements be codified by written conditions as a part of project approvals. Again, thank you for your time and your attention, and I hope that you deny this project or that it is seriously revamped to better meet what Gallatin needs. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Edwin Memes, nine oh five Ramsey Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you as I believe the matter before you is one of the most pivotal events in recent times as to where the city of Gallatin will be in the years to come. As I addressed your body at the previous meeting, I come before you with an even greater conviction of the safety and well-being for the citizens of Gallatin and the residents of the number one community who use Douglas Bend as their primary route to Nashville. Good afternoon, Mayor. The previous road work and relocation of Douglas Bend Road did not benefit anyone other than the developer allowing for a grand entrance to the Foxland subdivision. It actually created two dangerous curves and an intersection at one of these curves. As the road currently exists, turn lanes are virtually useless since they are not long enough to accommodate a vehicle towing a boat trailer, therefore blocking both lanes of traffic and all vehicles behind it. I don't know if y'all have been out there to look at that or not, but at this juncture in the planning process, the proverbial cart is before the horse, which you have the opportunity to correct. We ask that you further pause this approval process until an extensive traffic study is completed by an independent qualified engineering firm in an effort to come up with a feasible method to address the already dangerous traffic conditions that exist, let alone the additional traffic that will be generated as a result of a project of this magnitude. In closing, tonight you have the opportunity to decide whether or not to recommend to the council if you want to turn this into a Nashville downtown Lower Broadway. Foxland is a quiet residential area as well as the surrounding subdivisions and area. We do not need the commercial establishments brought into this residential area. We do not need condominiums that can be Airbnbs. We don't need any more establishments serving alcohol, certainly no music venues that will resonate loud music for miles into the early hours of the morning. What has been most recently represented to you does not represent the Warren Buffett that I know. If Berkshire Hathaway wants to be a good neighbor and a pillar of this community, they have the financial resources to make this a first-class development that will represent the family values and culture that makes Gallatin a great place to live. Thank you.
Deborah, you can pass that out.
Please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Schulte. I live at fourteen eighty-nine Boardwalk Place, Gallatin, Tennessee, within the Foxland Harbor community. When the Foxland Harbor and Fairview Plantation neighbors chose to build their forever homes in these communities, we did so in full awareness of the appreciation of Leon Moore's original vision, a vision crafted with care, professionalism by Manaus Designs dating back as far as two thousand and seven. At this time, the development included a modest fifty-to-seventy-foot marina and thoughtfully-designed restaurant. It reflected the character and scale that suited our lakeside community. Today, the plan for the development Today, the plan for the development seems to change week by week, creating uncertainty and distrust. What's currently being proposed bears little resemblance to Leon's original vision, nor the vision we embraced when we invested in our homes in this community of Gallatin. I'm here to speak, I'm here not to speak for myself alone, not to re- but to represent a collective voice of our community. A recent unbiased survey was conducted by the respective HOAs. Foxland Harbor, two-hundred-and-ninety responses. Fairview Plantation, HOA, two-hundred-and-sixty responses. Gallatin area residents on Douglas Bend, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine responses, yielding seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine total responses, and the results clearly reflect what our community supports and what we oppose. This is not a personal crusade. It's a united, community-driven effort to ensure that this development and the development of Gallatin is aligned with long-term character, vision, and values of the people who live here. Let me be clear, we are not against progress. We welcome growth and development in Gallatin, but we want to right-size it, not supersize it. We are asking for smart, balanced, and respectful development, development that honors the legacy of Leon Moore's original plan, then the integrity of our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time and your attention, the voices of the people who call this community home. Now, let's look at the results. The marina. The opposers, fifty-one point thirty-eight percent. Supporters, thirty-five point seventeen percent. That's a sixteen point twenty-one percent difference. If there was election, that would be a landslide. Let's look at the fuel dock. Fifty-six percent opposed, twenty-nine percent support, a twenty-seven point nine percent difference. Now, dock boat storage, I know it's not on the agenda anymore, but we're going to talk about it anyway because I wouldn't doubt that it comes back up in phase five, six, or seven. Strongly opposed, eighty percent. Strongly support, fourteen percent, a difference of fifteen percent. All these graphs are in front of you. The hotel, I know it's not on the agenda, but in case it comes up again, eighty-eight percent. Now, this is Foxland Harbor I'm speaking of, we'll have others talk about the others. Eighty-eight point twenty-eight percent. Support it, four point three percent, a difference of eighty-four point fifteen percent. There's over two-hundred-and-ninety respondents to this survey. Here we go. Condominiums, sixty-seven point twenty-four percent oppose it and twelve point seventy-six support it, a difference of fifty-four point forty-eight percent. Again, if it was an election, it's a landslide. The restaurant, favorable, forty-five point eighty-three percent. Those that oppose, thirty-nine point twenty-three, favorable by six percent. Retail shops, opposed, fifty-four point thirty-two percent. Again, two-hundred-and-ninety respondents, the difference twenty-nine point seventy-five percent, twenty-four point fifty-seven support it. Convenience store, sixty percent, sixty point twenty-one percent disapprove, seventeen point sixty-four percent strongly support, forty-five point twenty-seven percent difference. Parking facilities, opposed, fifty-two point fifty-nine percent. Strongly support, twenty-seven point three percent, a difference of twenty-five point twenty-six percent. A playground, how about a playground, guys? Wouldn't that be nice? Thirty point ninety-one percent opposed, forty-two point thirty-six support, eleven percent. Now, if we look at question fourteen, what are your priorities and concerns? I got this all documented for you, but I just want to hit the top fifty percent. Eighty-six percent, increased traffic on roadways, concerned, priorities. Increased activity and noise, seventy-five point ninety-seven percent. Homeowner's safety in the community, seventy-four point ninety-one percent. Modifications to the Foxland Harbor main entrance, seventy-three point five percent. Impact on property values, seventy-one point thirty-eight percent. Developments consistent with overall vision of Foxland Harbor community, sixty-three point twenty-five percent. Environmental, environmental impact, pollution, dredging, wildlife, fishing, recreation, fifty-three percent. Increased traffic on the lake, fifty-two percent. These are the top fifty percent in concerns, you can read the others. Now, let's go to the last question. How important is the public waterfront access, walking paths, parks, and fishing areas? Eighty-three point ninety-nine percent opposed, nineteen percent, not important, a sixty-four point ninety-eight percent difference. There's nothing in there for that, okay?
Just don't give me time to read them.
Okay, I sure will. What, what would you like to see? Question sixteen in the development. There was a hundred and nine responses right there, you guys can read them at your leisure. And also, next question, number seventeen, additional comments, suggestions, or concerns. There's also a hundred and nine respondents to that as well. Thank you for your time. How did I do? Five minutes.
First of all, I want to say how grateful we are for the city staff and the work that they've been doing on this project. There's been a million changes as time goes along, and their professionalism has been self-evident through it, so gratitude for all of us in red shirts, but thank you for staying with this project.
Can I just say your name and address for the record so we have it in minutes?
Pardon me?
Just need your name and address for the record.
Name is Joe Slawick, sixteen sixty-two Jacobs Drive, Fairview, and we have a lakefront home and see this beautiful treasure all the time. I'll just reinforce, Mike gave, our group went to each of the homeowners' associations and asked them to conduct a study of their own membership. You'll be receiving a copy of it. There could be nothing worse than me reading all the results to you, but what Mike said about Foxland turned out to be totally true about Fairview. Just some, um, some differences, again, the analogy to a landslide election, fifty-two point three percent of the two-hundred-and-fifty-eight respondents opposed the whole marina to thirty-five percent. A landslide kind of victor, victory. The floating dock, a particular sore point, the fuel dock that is, I know the city likes to distance themselves between the land and the water and the Army Corps of Engineers and what's that? But the reality is that, like the previous gentleman mentioned, the bathrooms are going to have to be on the ground, the garbage containers are going to have to be on the ground, the fuel storage tanks are going to have to be on the ground if there was a floating fuel dock. And, you know, it's over a two-to-one rejection of that, even that, that idea. So that distancing, you know, when you think of a trailer park for boats would be the only analogy I can give, I just wonder how you can provide services, just the access for the hundred DoorDash drivers that are going to be dropping off, dropping off pizza for boat slip numbers so-and-so coming through there. You know, it's not only the number of boaters, it's the DoorDash people, it's the fuel truck deliveries, all this has to be, not to mention the trailer storage. Again, boat storage, that was the dry dock, you know, that was like four to, three and a half to one, you know, you've heard the rest, I'm not going to take your time on that. But the results are very consistent between Foxland and Fairview. You're going to have them. I do encourage you to read them because they are the constituency of both Foxland and Fairview. There's also one more survey, and that was the one that was done for the Douglas Bend group. Again, the priorities, traffic and noise, increased traffic on the lake, environmental impact, you've heard it from people polluting, dredging, the damage to fishing and other treasures, impact on, uh, uh, safety for both the, the requirements to keep the, that area safe, but also the homeowners, that now if you invite the public in, you have a lot of strangers. Right now, everyone knows each other's votes. All that being said, by the way, one common denominator that keeps recurring, nobody objects to the marina that is originally proposed. People bought their homes based on that. So it's not as if we're against any marina, it's got to be right-sized and got to be consistent with the promises made to the homeowners who often invested their, their life savings. But the land will still have, even with seventy-five, so much necessary infrastructure for fuel tanks, for garbage, for restrooms, for other things, not to mention the goodwill. So with that, I'm going to pass my time along, and there are many comments in the back, you'll see one common denominator that, that nobody wanted to get to this point, you know, had the origi- it's been the egregious scope creep of this project and the never-ending changes to this project that, that meets that need tolerance. Thank you, thank you, city.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for giving us this opportunity to speak to you today about this project. I'm Deborah Maggert, I live at one-one-two LeBarre Drive in Hendersonville. I'm with Southern Strategies, and I'm representing the Friends of Old Hickory Lake. I'm not going to go through every single thing about this survey, but I have the survey about what the people in the Douglas Bend area, what they think about this. And so, as you all can see, seventy-five percent of the folks in that area, they oppose the marina. Seventy-eight percent oppose the floating fuel dock. And even though we don't have the dry dock storage in front of us anymore, eighty-six percent of the folks oppose that. And eighty-eight percent of the folks oppose the hotel. Eighty-two percent oppose the condominiums. Sixty-one percent oppose the restaurant. Seventy-one percent oppose the retail shops. Seventy-eight percent oppose the convenience store. And then, of course, we get to the priorities, what people are concerned about, and as you all can see, like the other folks in the neighborhoods, they are also concerned about the increased traffic on the roadways, the environmental impact, the increased activity of the noise and the disruption. They're concerned about the traffic on the lake, the safety of the lake, and the homeowner's safety in the community. And many of y'all know I used to represent this area when I was in the Tennessee General Assembly. Like several people, I'm a recovering politician. However, you all are public servants too, even though not all of you all are elected. And I hope you will take the time to look at the comments at the back of this survey because the people are telling you from their heart what they think about this, about their homes and their communities. So it's very important, as someone that used to have to listen to the people they represent, it's very important that you all take that under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tom Lee. I am an attorney with the Nashville Law Firm of Nelson, Mullins, Riley, and Scarborough, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Friends of Old Hickory Lake. I'm always a little reluctant to introduce myself as a lawyer in some rooms. It carries a little weight, not as much as I would like sometimes, but it's usually the wrong kind of weight, but I, I thought I'd turn that to an advantage. And take a look at the law. Here's how Tennessee law in Title sixty-eight, which is the boating title, defines a marina. A marina is a dock providing mooring for watercraft and boathouses and offering supply, repair, or other services, including electric power supply for remuneration. A marina's not structures that are privately owned and used exclusively by the owner or the owner's guests. Now, we've had some conversation around this for a while, and we should, you should, because the nature of this project keeps changing. But I want to talk about this definition of what a marina is. One of the earlier speakers rightly pointed out, yes, that's right, the Corps of Engineers decides what goes in the water, but what goes next to it is for you. And it's important to know what on the drawing you see on the screen is, so that you know what and whether it makes any sense for that to go next to a dock. It's a service station on the water. Boats pull up, they fuel, people buy coke, they go to the bathroom, they go away. It's a service station on the water. So who would live in the condominiums next to a service station? Well, we know, we don't put residential typically next to a service station because there's really a bad market for it. I live in Nashville. There are, at last count, according to the city, sixteen thousand six hundred forty-six short-term rentals in Nashville. Sixteen thousand. Forty-one percent of downtown housing in Nashville is short-term rental. It is why we have an affordable housing crisis. I would never wish that on Gallatin. But I strongly suggest that if you would like to speed your way toward it, authorize one hundred twelve short-term rental units. Now, the condominium association could do something about that if they were built. They could prohibit short-term rentals. Condo associations can. But it would be fair to you to ask right now, because transient lodging is not permitted in an MRO zone, it would be fair for you to ask whether these will be short-term rental units or not. Do you, as someone said, want your community to include a lower broad on the lake? As a Nashville resident, I can tell you, you do not. Now, we're here tonight because we, you voted to delay this matter thirty days ago, to this day. Let's look at the progress since that time. Has the developer reduced what it's asking for on the height of the buildings? No, it's not. It's still asking for the variants that people spoke against thirty days ago. Has the developer made accommodations for sufficient parking? Your staff suggests probably not. In fact, the parking number is achieved by some seventy bike and golf cart rental, or golf cart parking spaces. I, I love bicycles. I, I hope for the vision one day of a bicycle-led community, but you don't have one at that location, and you're not going to. The parking is not sufficient. How about a traffic study? Is that done? No, it's not. Why not? Everybody who came here said, we need a traffic study. You should ask the developer. Why not? Why didn't you take advantage of the time that the Planning Commission gave you a month ago? Stormwater plans? Nope, don't have those. Buffering around the, the development? No, not ready. Materials on structures? Up in the air, apparently. Use, mix? Couldn't be more vague than multi-use buildings. What kind of useful these buildings be put to? Well, multi. You don't know, and they won't tell you because they don't want to. Finally, well, the hotel is gone, and as I mentioned to you, it is not. That is being played off the stage. So, Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I'll just say this one thing. This is at least a major change. It is worthy of more time and study. You asked questions of the developer a month ago- You asked questions of the developer a month ago. Candidly, the developer hasn't responded to a one. Otherwise, these folks wouldn't be here. I thank you for your time.
Paul Akleji, ten twenty-four Clubview Drive, steps away from where the proposed development is going to go in. You've heard a lot of people today, also a lawyer, but not here as a lawyer, you've heard today a lot of people talk about the bait and switch. And I would say that's my biggest concern today, because it's my understanding that when there's a zoning commission meeting like this, where you're going to approve some new zoning that is so impactful as this, or even not so impactful as this, the area is supposed to have proper notice of what you guys are going to be ruling on. So I know you put a little sign in our driveway area when you come in, and, you know, we could call that number, but we didn't know what you were going to be approving today. I mean, as I walked in this door, it wasn't clear to me what you are going to be approving. I went to a meeting with Bob Goodall, giving us all a presentation on May twelfth, where he's showing pictures of hotels and all of this kind of stuff, totally different things. So that bait and switch is very real for us, and even your speed speaker over here, your staff planner, presented what was getting approved today so quickly, it was very difficult to even understand what, what he was saying, and he also mentioned there's eleven conditions to approval. We don't know what those eleven conditions are. It might have resolved a lot of the comments that you got today had you shared what was actually going to be in front of you and up for approval. So my suggestion is, you give us a little bit more time, maybe just a few weeks, maybe thirty days, so that you can actually announce to the community, and this clearly very important initiative, what is up for approval? What are we really looking at? What are those eleven conditions? Give us an opportunity to be able to give you our meaningful comment on the mixed use and the condos. I recognize you guys aren't ruling on the actual marina itself, that's the Army Corps, but let us give you some meaningful input around the buildings that are going to be constructed, particularly as it relates to traffic flow, or this, that, or the other thing, but we can't give you that insight as a community if we don't even know what you're approving today. So that's my request. Please give us an opportunity in a few more weeks or a month. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Kristi Wilson. I live at thirteen oh-one Dickerson Bay Drive. My husband and I lived in Nashville for years and worked very hard to buy a house in Gallatin about thirty years ago, right off of Douglas Bend. We were there before Foxland was even there. So watching that change was a big change for us and for our little retirement dream of watching a farm and living in the country. And so, Foxland is beautiful. The lake is why we moved out here. Now, both of our daughters, that were teenagers when we moved out here, have two daughters each of their own, that we take out on our boat. Years ago, when we were out boating with our daughter, she was following us on her wave runner and almost hit by a speeding bass boat over by Bull Creek Marina. This marina that's proposed, two hundred and fifty-three boat slips on that little inlet is like two inlets from where my granddaughters, ages two to sixteen, will be swimming. And the idea of people parking there and not the inlet there behind our house, which they already do, which is fine, but as far as the kids, people drinking at these facilities that are going to be built, and almost three hundred more boat slips in that tiny little inlet, that kind of ruins our retirement dream. And I'll probably be selling my house if anybody's in the market, so. Right on the lake, and I hate to see the lake destroyed for our children, and that's the most important resource that we have, is our children. And that's what we need to think about when we have a hundred more boats out there zipping up that little tiny station camp creek there. It's just scary for our kids. And I really would appreciate y'all considering not allowing all of that development and boat slips, and I, I don't even know how, we had a hard time even getting our boat slip approved years ago. How can there be, how could the Corps even consider all that in this little inlet? I don't know, but it's our children we need to think about. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Think about our children, please.
I just want to say that I'm not a newcomer that's moved in here in the last three or four years.
Mr. Reed, can you give us your address for the record?
House House Box two-four, two-four-seven Salina, Tennessee. I retired there a few years back, to Del Hall Lake. Anyway, I've made my living on Old Hickory Lake for thirty-five years. I used to own two marinas on this lake. I bought my first lots in Fairview when the cows were still on it. They were cutting hay, and when you bought your lot, they weren't in state. I owned at one time fifteen lots in Fairview Plantation, so I'm not a new guy in town. When Fairview started to develop, it was a closed area, private boat docks. We submitted application to the Corps to open it up for residential boat docks. When that public notice went in, the people on those sides of the lake, Dickerson Bay, Windsor Drive, et cetera, I saw their, their public comments. Their comments stated, those people bought those lots knowing they were not boat dock formidable and should never have a boat dock. It got opened. Foxland was developed next. It again was a closed area. We submitted to the Corps to get it open for residential boat docks. When that came public notice, some of the residents in Fairview sent the same comments. They bought them knowing it was closed, they should never have a boat dock. They were only interested in their little one hundred wide strip plan that they had bought. When the properties were marketed, they were marketed with a marina plan. It was part of the marketing. That plan showed thirty-four acres of marina. We have fourteen acres of water. It was twice the size of this. Some of the land purchasers in Foxland, their purchase contract has in writing that that's a potential marina site. When they bought the property, they were aware of it. The Douglas Bend Road improvements were done at a hundred percent cost of the developer. When they were engineered and designed, the marina was taken into consideration and is widened and built to accept the marina. The, the boat ramp that everybody's concerned about, there's eight public boat launching ramps within a twenty-minute radius of that ramp, that they drive by every day to get to that ramp. Why, I don't know. Well, the ones are underutilized and they're not used. So they have options. That's not the only boat ramp in town. In fact, you can see them from there. So they have eight choices with a twenty-minute radius there. The marina is a very seasonal product. Built marinas, own marinas, work with marinas still to this day. They are a Memorial Day to Labor Day entity. They're a dead horse in the winter. So all this traffic and all this gas station stuff and all that is just blown out of proportion. It's just not true. The marina owners start eight months out of the year because they have no business. It's over with. There's a party on Labor Day, and after that, the lake dies. Our plan contains four hundred pages in it, and it covers everything. It's full of detail, it's public knowledge, it shows all our bathroom facilities, on the water, off the water, our pumping stations, everything that we're going to do. Also, this marina is probably, of the eight marinas, it's at the bottom of the list in size, yet it has more parking than almost any of them. So I hear all this, and I'm just not sure where all that's coming from, because it's just, it's just.
Please be quiet.
So if, if they can do their own homework, and I can name these eight public boat launching ramps, and I can tell them where the other marinas are at, and they can do like I did and find out how many slips have and go and count every parking place they have in them, and came up with the same numbers I came up with. So in the, the wake that they're concerned about, I have the law right here. We're allowed to put no-wake buoys three hundred feet beyond our no-wake zone, which is our lease area. We're also, we've got a verbal consent from TWRA and the Corps, put informational buoys up Station Camp Creek as much as a quarter to a half mile, which will slow traffic down coming into that area. So I think we, we've got a good plan. I think we've addressed a lot of things, and I think we're doing everything we can to make it a good safe operation. I think that's all I can.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item before closing the public comment? Anyone else who makes sure we don't miss anybody, please?
Amen. Bobby's a good friend of mine.
If you would, would you come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please, and we'll...
Chuck Reed, R E A D, one-four-six-nine Boardwalk Place. Hi, Matt. Matt used to be a neighbor on our street, and Bobby was a good friend of mine when we first got settled. We were house number seven in, in Foxland Harbor. Sitting on the water, we love looking out and seeing the boats. The one concern that I haven't heard really being addressed is that there's no other place where boaters, whether it's pontoon, or jet skis, or whatever, can really move freely in that, I'll call it the open, the open waterway next to our house, that, you know, now, you know, so people are pulling, towing their children behind in the floats, they're towing water skiers, and this is the one place you can do it. You can't do it on the main water, the main waterway of the, the river. And it's the one place that they can. And now, we're going to have more boats, just transient boats, going through that, what, you know, is the leisurely tubing area and the water ski area. And I think it's a public safety issue for the boaters, I mean, for the, the people that recreate in that area. Just a comment I had.
Thank you, sir.
If I pass out on y'all, just forget it. I don't do public speaking.
We'll make it easy. Start with your name and your address.
Gwen Rasha, fourteen fifty-seven Dickerson Bay Drive. I lived in Nashville before moving here, and my husband and I finally decided, we've had it with the politics, we had it with the overgrowth of Nashville. We bought our lots maybe fifty-five years... that I grew up in, in Florida, and I refused to move back to Nashville. When I lived in Nashville, I lived in Forest Hills, which was the overflow of Bellmead, and we were always bickering, who, who was the best? I still say Forest Hills was the best. The one thing I can say about our politicians in Nashville, which I can say very little about, good about them, they didn't build a fancy, loud, noisy nightclub in the middle of either Bellmead or Forest Hills. I don't think they even thought about doing that. We were, Forest Hills and Bellmead are the number-one neighborhoods in Nashville. I feel like our cove is like Bellmead and Forest Hills, and you're putting a gas station, a high, loud, noisy club, you're putting condos that should not, if, if the condos are going to be there, they shouldn't be allowed to rent. You're destroying Bellmead and Forest Hills, in a sense, because that's what this area is. We complained to Corps many a time about the wake boats coming within inches of our dock. They knocked my neighbor's son off their dock. They'd come so close. My husband would be out there fishing, and he would yell at them to get off, off the dock, you know, get, move out more in the middle. Corps wouldn't do anything, because it's a recreational cove, we were told. It's not going to be a recreational cove now, because there's going to be too many boats, extra boats, that are going to be on there. So skiers, the floats, all that can't be done. My grandson swam at our dock, and I live in fear because are the boaters paying attention? They don't do it in, on the weekend, because there are just way too many boats. This needs to be really, really thought about. You're destroying this cove completely. So I hope you vote no against everything. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak before closing the public comment?
Good evening. My name is Greg Ziles. I live at fourteen seventy Boardwalk in Foxland Harbor. A lot of good comments have been presented tonight, so mine are more in generic nature. And the first question that keeps popping up into my head is, who does this marina actually serve? Who is it designed to serve? Who's the marina intended to serve? And what are the demographics of Gallatin currently that will be best served by this marina at this location? If I drive from my house in Foxland Harbor, it's two and a half miles, four miles, I'm sorry, to get to Gallatin Marina, one and a half miles by water. What's the master ten-year vision for Gallatin Planning? Do we have one for the city of Gallatin? It's been seventy years since the last marina in Gallatin. What are the customer demand studies from Gallatin residents that have been done providing and proving that we need this type of expansive project? What's the pro forma that the builder has provided to show you the financial case to support the building that he's required or submitted to you? Has anyone in the Planning Committee explored, explored... Has anyone in the planning committee explored, explored Marina building in other parts of the country? For example, there's marinadockage.com. There's about fifty-five pages of issues related to building docks. And that organization will be here in Nashville in December, second to the fourth. Might be worthwhile to take a look at that. Things like stormwater runoff, how we've accounted for it, um, overbuilding ecology issues, et cetera. What's this sustainability plan for the project that's been submitted? I haven't seen any mention of that at all. We talk about traffic and the impact and it's a serious one. This weekend, last weekend rather, there was an accident at Douglas Bend in Nashville Pike. And I don't know if anybody saw the traffic that was backed up as a result of that accident from somebody turning into Douglas Bend. I think that's a precursor of what you can look forward to in the future. So Allgood or Mr. Goodall, is he really competent to design and build a Marina that will have an impact for the next seventy years? And who are the advisors for the planning commission that have advised them on the impact of a Marina in our community? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, anyone else wishing to speak? I've seen no one getting up to speak. I'm gonna close the public comment on this item and we will hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chair, for applicant speaks, I just wanted to make, make mention of one of the conditions of approval that engineering has and that's regarding outside traffic improvements. It would be required to do a traffic impact study and anything from their approved traffic impact studies to mitigate the traffic would be a requirement of that. And I will mention that they did submit a traffic impact study last week. Um, I had just a little bit of time to, to review that. Um, their previous approval didn't show a driveway on Douglas Bend, um, but now they are showing one. Um, so this extra driveway adds a conflict point on Douglas increases the traffic on Foxland. Um, the, one of the, or the improvement is for the Douglas Bend and Foxland, um, intersection from their study was an always stop condition versus what our approved or what our, um, preferred mitigation method being a roundabout. So through their, through the review of their traffic impact study, would be requiring roundabout. If they installed a roundabout, then, uh, the connection to.
Folks, folks, I need the audience to be respectful and, and not disrupt me. It's hard for us to hear when you guys are talking. Thank you.
So the proposed driveway to Douglas Bend can remain if, if the roundabout is installed.
Okay, so, especially to your amount of shit, it's just where the infr- intersection of Fox and Boulevard and Douglas.
In Douglas, that's correct.
Correct.
Their traffic impact study showed an, an always stop being enough to mitigate the, the traffic from their development.
Hi, Matt Huff, with Gamble Design Collaborative, a planner on the project. I, uh, I'm gonna keep it a little brief, but I, I wanted to say that myself and the design team, the development team are excited to be involved in a, what we see as a really special opportunity for the city of Gallatin and for Foxland. This is the first Marina in Gallatin in roughly seventy years and it's an opportunity for the residents of Gallatin to interact with its greatest asset in a new and special way. Um, we're talking about a lakefront development that's excessive, accessible by foot and bike and by boat and even golf carts. Um, something special that the city can be proud of. Now, this is not a new idea. This is something that's been discussed now over fifteen years. Um, and over that time, it's, it's been shaped and reshaped by conversations, uh, conversations with the community, with the neighbors, with staff, um, and most recently with planning commission. Um, and at the, at last month's planning commission, we, we heard a lot of input and that input, um, kinda along with the conversations we've been having outside of planning commission over the six months prior, kind of the common theme was we don't want dry storage, we don't want a hotel. And so we went back and we huddled up and, and we did, we listened and so we removed it. We removed the dry storage, we removed the hotel. And what we were left with is what you see now. And that's a hundred and twelve condominium units, thirteen or fourteen thousand roughly square foot of retail space, waterfront, uh, waterfront restaurant and tied together with, uh, an outdoor plaza that overlooks Old Hickory Lake. And all at a lower density than previously approved, as pointed out by staff earlier tonight. You can't expect to please everyone. Um, and I, I understand that, you know, people are gonna have opinions and, and we just happen to disagree with a lot of those opinions, uh, on this particular development. But we feel like this plan does a much better job of listening to the community than previous ones have. And we think it's the right plan for this site. And we hope that the commission agrees. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
I wanna start with, maybe Jim back up. Can we go back to what's currently approved for the plan? The only thing I want to clarify for everyone is what we're discussing tonight is not accepting or denying a Marina, it's changes to a plan that was approved in two thousand twenty-three. So just for clarity, it's a.
I would ask a request that you articulate the conditions of approval. I have, again, people reach out to me and I'll send them a link to this, but engaging with some of the speaker comments, I don't think everyone's aware of the conditions of approval. I think that'd be helpful.
Sure.
So I wanna start with, this version of the plan is really kind of emerging uh, to previously approved plans. So the first one is the actual Marina plan. So this was approved by planning commission in June, uh, twenty twenty-three prior to application to the Corps of Engineers for the Marina. And so it included some of the land to the corner of Douglas Bend and Foxland, but not the rest of the property. Okay. Okay, so, um, this was the, like I said, original approval, um, from planning commission, uh, like I said, back in June twenty twenty-three. And then in twenty twenty-two, um, the development group, uh, who developed the remaining condos at Foxland, uh, brought this plan in and it was approved for some of that corner land, but also the rest of the property extending to kind of the clubhouse parking lot. So in essence, this plan is kind of emerging of those two separate plans. Um, so, um, eleven conditions of approval, kinda start from the end. So, um, this one is a standard condition, uh, just submit meeting all the other conditions of approval. Um, this is engineering's condition talking through the traffic impact study um, and what offside improvements may be required and showing those and requiring to build. So seven, eight, nine, um, so stormwater, um, going through kind of that process is eight and seven and eight. Um, as a reminder, um, especially for those who are not as day-to-day with this process, uh, preliminary master development plans are often preliminary, meaning that the finer details of architecture, landscaping, buffer yards, lighting, uh, stormwater, um, construction plans broadly speaking, um, although now those are a separate process, um, are not included with this document. Um, so we would expect from a staff perspective that all lighting, all signage, all of those things would conform to cove requirements as they would for any other development in the city. And this also goes back to that UCP, uh, engineering construction plan process. So, um, and then back at the top, so this is conditions one through five, um, so we request to add a note for no outdoor storage material on Douglas or Foxland. Uh, we would expect, it's not uncommon with a retail, you know, that somebody has a rack of clothes that they pull outside or books or any of that sort of thing. Um, and that would be fine for kind of that courtyard area, but that wouldn't be something that we would expect or want to see along public roadway for that. Um, and then just additional plantings and, uh, a few other things. The final parking counts, uh, a request for that, um, to kind of be tightened up with the FMVP and then loading areas. So, um, all.
And just, sorry, with these, um, at the end of the PD, can I just, right, so the final master.
So final master development plan, uh, preliminary master development plan. So, um, that would be, the, the final master development plan would be the next step in this process, uh, if and when it was approved by planning commission and or city council, depending on how we go through this process.
And just to be clear, that there is a preliminary master development plan approved at this point?
Yes, so there are, there are two.
That is, I think, something that's, that's missing from a lot of understanding.
Correct. Um, so like I said, both of these, um, the condos, sixty-four condo units were approved, um, of the PMVP, preliminary master development plan amendment in twenty twenty-two. The Marina was approved as a preliminary master development plan approval in twenty twenty-three. So both of those plans, uh, kind of comprise the area that makes up the property for this company.
Jim, will you put the, um, the twenty twenty-three, the previously approved PMVP for the Marina portion, not the condos, but Marina portion, back on the screen?
Sure.
So what, just, I'm not gonna hold up that, that reading basis, but what's the, the building, there's, the original plan included what type of uses other than just the parking? I think it had a restaurant.
So, um, it was basically thirty-five hundred square feet of restaurant, food service use and fifteen hundred-ish square feet of convenience, services, adds that Marina fuel station use.
So the, the field dog was already included in the previously approved PMVP?
Correct.
Another part, Jim, if we're having more questions here, so go ahead.
One of the prominent questions, um, that I've heard tonight and, and prior to speaking with a few people is about the short-term rental use of, um, the condominiums. I don't know what developer news represented could determine willingness to put limitations. It's not something the city could do, but it's something that you all can do within the purview of your development.
Right. That's something that we've, we've discussed. It's just so early on. I don't know that we can, we're, we're able to commit to.
Folks, that's uncalled.
Be helpful asking the questions.
Yeah, at, at this point, we're, the conversation is ongoing. Um, this has changed a lot in the last thirty days. Um, and, and I, I wish I had a solid answer for you right this instant that, but I, I just can't give you one. But as, as that conversation evolves, um, we will obviously keep you in the loop and, and I think by the FMVP stage, that's something that we'd be willing to, to codify however we could.
But the sixty-four, the four standalone condo buildings right now are currently approved. And if someone wanted to move forward with an FMVP, four of those standalone four condo buildings, if they.
Yeah, that's, that's. That's right, yes.
Yeah, so this is the, that was the basic completion of the regular point, yeah, on block two.
And an office building.
Questions, folks? So I guess I just have to ask the question, which is, you know, why not just build the planning joint up?
Uh, so there was a, they were able to get, uh, they being, the developer was able to get access to the ownership of the new land, so they, the property expanded. Um, previously, we only showed access on to Foxland Boulevard and we never felt like that was enough. Um, we felt like there was a need for a second point of access and so we went and did that on to Douglas Bend. Um, as the conversation evolved, it turned into dry storage. Um, that was from a conversation with the Car- Army Corps of Engineers. Since then, that's kind of, we've determined that the community was not going to accept that. Um, and so it, it was removed. But it's just been a evolving conversation since two thousand eight or so, um, that's really sped up in the last five years. Um, and, and that's kind of how we've gotten to this point where we're at tonight.
Do you have a question?
I still have questions, so.
Okay, I, I just have one, cause I, I've, I've heard about the, the neon Nashville light lights numerous times. Is, is that even allowed in the absence?
Not particularly, no.
Okay, I didn't think it was part of our sign ordinance to allow such things.
Okay, um, well, first of all, I do think direct access from Douglas Bend is preferable. I think that would relieve a lot of the pressure on the neighborhood and a lot of the undesired impact.
Absolutely.
So I do think that's positive. Um, I did have a question and maybe you can do it, not maybe our attorney is. You mentioned about, um, transient residents not being allowed in MRO zones and I don't, I don't really understand that, cause I thought that's where hotels fell. So I don't understand that. Um, the lower bar, I can hear somebody mentioning that. I, I don't care for the, none of us, I think, we ever want to see a, a comparison of lower bar. Um, there was a question or a couple of questions about, um, not necessarily, actually specific to a question that I asked about asking to see, um, oh, what would you call it? The, um, something to show the scope of scale, if you will. And I was curious particularly from Fox and Boulevard and also from the other side of the lake. That was my question relevant to the dry storage. And so I think that you probably thought, oh, well, that's not necessary because that's out. But I do think that is still important. Um, I heard before I actually got here, I heard, um, planning presenting that the building heights are similar to what exists in Foxland, but I don't remember what the dry storage height was asking at that point. Do you have any recollection?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
But it also was so big too. I mean, that was part of the concerns that I had related to that. Uh, so not just the height. Um, so I do think that that's gonna be helpful as, as, um, you know, future plans are considered. Um, I know you've already got approved what you've got, but even in that platinum master development plan, I think that's gonna be important to understand exactly what the scale looks like.
Mayor Brown, the MRO district permits transient habitation by traditionally used criminal.
Does that require a report? Is that an appeals?
Right.
Yeah.
So like, go, go through this body, because of, because of PMVP.
Yeah, it would be, it could be approved through the master plan process.
Uh, that does actually remind me of another thing that's in the conditions of approval, that there is a limited use of the retail, I guess, that you guys would present at some point, that it's not a wide open, all out, or, I don't, there's a lot of things I think a lot of people wanna see in there, but that would fall in that retail category, but, um, there's some, um, I can't call it quick enough.
It, it'd be accessory to the Marina use.
Only accessory to Marina use? Like the.
That's what you showed.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's the.
Even if you couldn't put like a large box store in there, you could do limited retail.
The retail use would say retail, limited retail sales accessories.
Yeah, boutique.
Yes.
Question, please.
And then, and then if you want to have a conversation about things around this point.
So Mr. Carr has a question.
I'm sorry, I'll ask no more.
Old Douglas Bend Road, um not really sure I understand the functionality and how it's incorporated into this plan thoroughly, it's not the primary access. But my question is if it's being used as an access point, um why wasn't the roundabout consideration moved back up to um where the access to the O ramp is? And create a roundabout access there that would provide the primary access to the Marina of that rather than further down?
Old Douglas Bend is not gonna be used by vehicles, it'll just be foot traffic.
Oh, that answers that.
Well, let's, let's, let's.
And that's not an option, is it?
Not that I know of, um.
Is that because of core or?
You're saying is the roundabout in that location an option?
Old Douglas Bend Road, was it an option to be the primary access point?
Um.
Does it move all the traffic away from the segments of Foxland, puts it all?
My recollection is that it was not an option, um I think it was a structurally, it's it's just an old road without. I'm I'm going off memory right here, honestly, I'm not, I can't remember what.
I wouldn't suggest using the F D.
Yeah, very early on, it was determined it was not going to be an option to use as a main access. I think it would have benefited us a lot to be able to use it, but um but yeah, we just.
Yeah. You know, and not an option in its current state or not an option altogether.
There's also environmental, the water comes into that little area there, I think you've got kind of a wetland situation, it it, there's a lot of things fighting against the utilization of that as a, as our main access. I don't think we have, we could even use it to get, you know, for temporary access for uh construction or anything.
The other thing for marketing.
I'm actually, I actually think it's helpful to separate where the public access is and not in those docks versus all the other docks, because I think that will help keep public space open down at the public access area.
Maybe that's.
I was just trying to move the traffic conflict further back.
Hmm.
I think we've gotten to some issues with the proximity of of that access to the traffic signal, as well as some wavelength issues of where Old Douglas goes into the dock.
Well, I think the horse is dead, I'll bet you.
I'd like to, let's, let's uh have a conversation on major versus minor amendment, maybe.
I'm making a motion that it's a major amendment.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second, that'd be a major amended amendment, and you know, so that will send it on, send it, what our recommendation is one to city council to be evaluated later. So any, any conversation debate about maybe the major versus minor? See, none in favor of being a major amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? All right, so there's a major amendment to the approval plan, and it will go to city council. So so let's, we're our deliberations into what our recommendation will be to go to city council, so.
Mr. Chairman, has this uh, has this item already been deferred once?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we we deferred it the last time we do it, the post mayor on the city website.
So we're not permitted to defer again, yes, sir.
I don't think so, but if we defer again, it's an automatic recommendation.
To council.
To council for approval?
I'd, I'd have that.
I don't know when it was, I'll I'll defer to planning, I don't know when it was filed.
That is tiny.
So there's sixty days, and that gets us really, really close, so I would recommend, I don't, I don't know the actual number of days.
My question is if it, if, because the two deferrals and it exceeds the sixty days, does that go to council with an automatic recommendation of approval, or is it go to council with no recommendation?
Or does it go to council at all?
Oh, does it go to council?
I believe it's a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation by default.
By default.
Can we confirm that, because uh my understanding is there's no recommendation.
Um that's not my experience, I I think it goes with positive. Now, there's no minutes to back it up, I guess the minutes from from the deferral would would back up the discussion, but. There wouldn't be a, cause there wouldn't be a vote in the minutes to follow it.
If you completely have a recommendation aspect to it, uh it would normally just be assumed as approved.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why I.
That's true, the confirmation.
The how, the confirmation minor, that it would be approved by default, that's not.
Right, a bill or a normal cycle.
That's correct, but that's, no, I'm not. I I think this is one, it it needs to be a city council, something, when, you know, this is one where ultimately the the elected officials that these folks put in office ultimately need to make these final decisions, not not the elected commissioners, it's just a matter of time.
So I mean, in reality, the the major change between the two approvals in this one is what is occurring on the second property that was purchased. I mean, there's a four, we've, this body has already approved the the four condo buildings.
Yeah.
We've already approved the Marina, it's the.
The two mixed use.
The two mixed use buildings are really what's left on the table, and we'll put this conversation at this point, so.
I don't think you wanna deny it, because that takes access to Douglas Bend off the table, and um and I think there's a lot to get through before you get to an F M D P stage.
But there is, we're past the point of of approval to deny it at this point.
Right, right, but that's what I'm saying, that if we were to, if we were to. Not, I mean, recommend, not recommend, I can hear it either way, but I think. I think, I think, I think the access to Douglas Bend is really, really important, and we can't go back and change the original plan and force that therein, that's my concern.
Well, they still have to do a traffic impact study, you know, with the original approval, that may show some of those improvements are needed, so there's still that. Here, you mentioned that they had submitted a traffic study, um that had just, so already got that to you, do you think by the time it went to council, that you guys would have more, have had a better chance to dive into it?
When would this go to?
To council.
Council, they start the late, I think the first meeting.
We definitely got some initial comments.
Um on it, I don't know if you have, have had a chance to do a full review. Uh but how, but how makes it to an actual meeting for a prior first reading, cause the council process, you're gonna have committee meetings, the first reading, the public comment meetings, and then a second meeting, so there's.
There, yeah, there we should be able to get some pretty solid comments. Although, and but if I understand correctly, you are requesting the traffic study get amended to include the access on to Douglas Bend, because the current one.
It does, it does include. But with with that access on to Douglas Bend, the recommended um mitigation strategy for the intersection of Foxland and Douglas isn't always top. And we're wanting to see a roundabout.
But thi- this, I guess the, what what is shown in the plan doesn't, doesn't change or amend the storage of Foxland Boulevard. It's, it's essentially adding a left turn into this development, away from the main entrance of Foxland. So it's not, it's not touching the left turn lane in the Fox and Boulevard with this proposed plan.
That is correct. But the the traffic impact study may need to be, there's something else to be done there.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it could have an increased impact, I'm not optimistic that it will. Um I also did wanna just communicate for the benefit of people who are here and listening, um you know, I think we probably all received, you know, several, you know, comments. Um I think everyone that's against it doesn't realize that we've actually received several comments that were pro. Um but I think both sides are kind of based in like what they think could be done at this point. Um and so I have concerns about that, and I certainly understand the confusion goodness knows, I still get confused, and I've been doing this a long, long time. About, you know, where we are in the process and what happens on down the road and what is specifically the Marina, what is our purview, because this is unique for us, it has been done in a lifetime, right? Um I don't think anybody's lifetime, so um that is different, but there have been, um yeah, there have been people reaching out, there to me has not been an overwhelming number compared to some of the other developments that we've received in the middle. Um and also where this goes, and this is um specifically for the creator of the survey, I do, you know, before I really understand what those responses look like, which are helpful, very helpful. Also, even though the questions look like, so if we could, that would be for you, that would be for, remember, that would be very helpful, Mr. Schulte, just give me a level of comfort with the responses, thank you.
I know, I know we're not voting on what goes on in the water, we're just kind of curious, I think, where do you all stand with Cor? Is everything done with Cor, or are you all still working through?
I'd have to lean on uh Mr. Goodall, who's not here tonight, for that piece of the conversation, um so I, everything is not done, um but it's close.
Okay.
Um yeah, I, that's the best I can give you right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I get down at the court, I get down to us.
Right.
Right, I, you, I would just point out, you know, when we, when this came through planning back in two thousand twenty three, it was a stark difference, there was no public comment. A, I would see zero emails, zero phone calls, not a, not a single citizen showed up to any of the meetings when the original approvals went through. So, I mean, there's definitely a little difference here, so.
There's a reason.
I don't, I don't remember, I I don't, I'm trying to think back to the means you had on the four condo buildings.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while back, so.
Well, I remember at that point, though, the original plan actually had about a hundred more condos than that plan did, and so I feel like that probably influenced that, it looked like a deduction on.
Cause the original, the original Foxland master plan back from, I think it was oh eight, it was the two hundred and seventy seven, some odd units, so.
We're at a hundred and seventy?
Hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve.
But, yeah, Foxland's already there, so.
Oh, the original, that's that's taken that out, because it's four hundred, what is it, four hundred?
There's about a hundred, even with with this, there's about a hundred overall units less than they have the the approvals for. So this is what it goes, but um, you know, any other questions? You know, we need to send this recommendation to council.
Hi. Did you say any more questions?
Yeah, any, any more questions or or motion?
Came here tonight thinking that eighty percent of the questions have been answered, but there's a little bit of a, uh drop of storage in hotel, and and as far as the number slips on the lake, I know people are concerned about that, but I don't think that's our purview, so I thought the majority of the questions have been answered. Um I'll be happy to vote if we take a three hour recess, so I can read all these comments, and there's some good comments, I don't agree with all of them, just ones I've read so far, but I think there's some good stuff to read. We can't defer the thing, because it's already been deferred once. I can only say, if you're willing to stay here until midnight, I'll be happy to cast a vote, but I am absolutely gonna abstain from voting if you call for a vote right now, because I'll have to come in here and answer your questions. I'm not saying I won't vote, but you're gonna have to be patient.
Well, if you don't, if you don't vote, then it goes on anyway.
Well, that's true, if you're asking me to vote, I will do my duty, I will vote, but I'm not gonna vote in the next fifteen minutes. How much you want?
Anybody else have any comments?
I would not disagree with what Mr. Carrier said, that the primary issue and the change that happened was in, I think so much of the public's. Absolutely do not want hotel, absolutely do not want um the rest of the dry storage, and so I think, I mean, to give you some credit, I do think that taking that out, you felt like you were responding to the main issue. And then, but, I mean, this, this is how.
Absolutely, I had problems with the dry dock storage, and I have problems with the potential we're opening up to hotel. Um I like the overall plan, but I would really like to understand all of the concerns that people have put in here, I'm not a speed reader, but I'll start reading out.
What if we consider, and this might be a question for you, it's having a special call?
I'll be happy to.
What, when, I guess my main, my first question is, when would that actually help, if it's all based on a day?
I was gonna give notice, we need, what, ten, seven days, ten days?
They don't do a special call meeting on mine, you know, but.
Well, you got one. It's, I, I saw Mr. Strummer nodding agreement with what you said, which we're out, I'll bet on this, that only leaves four people, no, three people betting on it. Not appropriate on here.
I see, you need to.
Oh, okay, so you're not obvious.
I'm, 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 um.
Okay, I, I was listening to it over great, when this was driving, instead of not to watch.
We sound alike, we sound alike.
Wait, I think to to Mr. Carr's point, had this, had this come back through another work session, then there wouldn't be more time to to see the changes in the way that a lot of the public time is being, was being imposed, rather than two business states before, he was before us, so, um.
Mr. Chairman, we counted, and uh according to our account, uh, uh, a special call meeting would have to occur prior to the eighteenth of July.
Eighteenth of July?
I found this tomorrow, I wonder, four weeks. I don't think you wanna push back for longer, but.
Well, yeah, I would, I would say I'm, I'm out of the country from July fourth to eighteen, so I'm just gonna put that out there. Can we call for a vote? Well, I, I don't have a motion to call for a vote. So someone wants to make a motion, or you're gonna make a motion to defer it, to approve it, deny it?
Do you have enough notice, we don't have enough notice to get it before you get out of town.
Well, you can.
July the third, what is? July third is ten days from now.
My, my, my preference is to, you know, we can send it to, send it to council, let, let, let them.
Well, I already said we're gonna send it to.
I'm confident as well.
Right, it's gonna, yes. Here, here's my case on this, I'd say that we likely need to vote, because this is going to city council regardless. And I mean, it doesn't, at least it doesn't change anything.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I was just, okay, is there willingness of anyone to press down about, if not, I don't have a question just to be summed up.
Yeah, I, I, I'm.
I'm not, I'm not interested in making a motion to, to, to delay anything, yeah.
I'll, I'll second, I'll second that, I, I will. This, this one is, is one we've obviously seen multiple times, um. Two thirds of it is already, two thirds of it, two thirds of it is already approved. It can be built, someone can submit an F M D P tomorrow and build, and build it, so, um. I'll make a motion to approve, let's have conditions.
Okay, the motion, CJ, to approve excess conditions of approval?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by the mayor, so.
I don't want it to, uh not move, yeah, I don't want to be bored without that access for sure. Now, that is with a lot of questions outstanding and and um, you know, on both, on both your side and from the people who are concerned.
I think my preference still is that I wish I was able to build what was already approved, but.
Um I kind of do, but I kind of like this, I mean, I like that access piece, that access piece feels important to me.
Well, at the end of this.
And I think that access piece comes at a cost that is.
I, I think.
Be offset.
I think the, the council really needs to look hard at, I think they will, and I'll be glad to have you stay here and have some more, more information on the, the traffic aspect of it, but.
Yeah, I would, I would urge that a lot of the traffic study discussion happened with engineering prior to receiving a final decision, I know we can't, once it gets processed, we can't decide that, right? I'm very sad.
Absolutely.
So we're, we're voting on it as a recommendation, that would go with this one, I go to city council vote. Um others in, in favor of sending with positive recommendations, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, and I'll be a no. And point out discussion.
So what are we doing, two to one, and don't go that way?
Right, why don't you vote? All right, let's do a roll call, let's, yeah, a roll call. Alright, let's do a roll call, let's, yeah, a roll call.
Thank you, Barbara, go ahead.
For the, for the, send this to the council with positive recommendation.
With, with conditions that are.
With, with has, with this mass conditions of approval?
No major doubt.
It's already, it's already determined that it's a major.
Chair Harris?
No.
Ms. Chairman Reddell?
Yes.
Mr. Greer?
I'm staying.
Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Finn?
I'm staying.
Mr. Strader?
Refuse.
You don't tell him?
Two yeses.
Two yeses, two no's?
Two.
Two to a stage, you know.
Two to a stage.
I don't mind going to council, I just, there's a lot of information that can be.
But that's good to council.
We want to council, we do have a council.
Good, but I, but, I mean, I'd have to at this point, the other things that could happen and the things I'm concerned about
Right.
is the developer says, we'll just set what we've got, and then you can have all that traffic going through.
Well, right, so there's less energy between the two sides. But that motion dies because there's, it's a tie, so, right?
Well, you just, you just, you just send it with, uh, uh, um.
No, where?
No. Yep.
Because it's tied.
It's tied.
Um, I guess that's.
Because it's a, the extension's in the review, so it's a tie, so the motion doesn't pass.
Why, please?
So, um, the motion goes to council with no recommendation?
It doesn't, no, if, if there's not a motion that passes, whether it be positive or against, you have to, and think, and, and, and.
The motion didn't, 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 didn't move. It is.
The same, the same motion can be.
Alright, I'll amend my vote.
This, let me, let me, let me try and.
Oh.
Mr. Strader.
But I'll amend my vote that it goes to council, still, in case, I was trying to say.
So, so you're changing your no to a yes?
All yeses.
No.
Okay.
So it's, that's three yeses.
Okay, well, that'll be then three yeses, that'll send, that'll send it to the city council with the off recommendation.
So. But, but just to be clear, they still could not take it on to council and go with what's previously.
That's, that's right.
This, and that opens the door for you to go to council with an alternate plan.
Right, and have that council.
I would, I would hear you go to council with the alternate plan and, you know, really look at the strategy and.
Question, just for legal, do we need to have another motion made so that, that Albert wants to change his vote, he can do that officially?
Yes, we need to have a motion to reconsider and then.
Okay.
Can the same motion be, you know, to the C J?
Yes, but first you need to, because you've already voted, so once you voted, you can't, you can't just change them.
I made a motion to reconsider.
But is, since there's a losing side, can you do that? Well, it was a, it was a.
It was, it's, yeah, the, the motion failed, we, there was no action taken because the motion fails, so we don't, we don't have a tiebreaker in our bylaws.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, so I made a motion to reconsider second by CJ, so.
I would make a suggestion also, um, I know one of the concerns that in short term rentals, I mean, if you wanted to include something about grading short term rentals.
That's, you can't do it, I do that.
I think that has to be developers.
That, that's a statement, that's a rule, so, let's, right now we got, we got a motion to second to reconsider, all those in favor of reconsidering, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no, okay, so, now you can, now you can restate your motion.
Okay, motion to approve with sound conditions.
Okay.
That counts.
I've got a motion by CJ second by the mayor to reconsider to, to approve, to send the positive recommendation with status conditions of approval, Mary Ann Sitchcock will call it over.
Chair Harris?
No.
Ms. Chairman Reddell?
Yes.
Mr. Greer?
I'm staying.
Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Finn?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Strader? Mr. Johnson?
Refuse.
Okay, so, so that passes forward to one, alright, that, that concludes the, uh, item of Foxland Marina. At this time, we will take a ten minute recess, we can convene a ten minute after.